There we go. The Lindmar School Board meeting is called to order at 5:00 PM in the boardroom of the Learning Resource Center. Could you please determine a quorum?
Buckholz.
Here.
Eisenberg.
Here.
Lawson.
Maury.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Walt.
And Weaver.
Here.
Quorum is present at 5:00.
Thank you. Adoption of agenda, please.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And passes. Okay, on to audience communication. At this time, the board invites the public to speak on items related to the agenda or district. The board will receive and acknowledge comments but will not engage in a dialogue with the speaker because of the set agenda for the meeting. Remarks are limited to three minutes per speaker. Remarks should not contain names or other identifying information about students, teachers, administrators, or other personnel. Please be conscious of when you come up, those of you who'd like to speak, saying your name, and at three minutes, we will tell you it's time to stop, and we would appreciate it if you would do that at that time. So, is there anyone who'd like to speak to us this evening? I was gonna say this'll be a first.
Hi, my name's Matt Rullinger. I've got two children in the district. I've got two quick points I want to talk about this evening. First one, there's a lot of talk regarding some committees, or a committee in particular, that has been formed, and a lot of parents are reaching out to me concerned about critical race theory being brought to Lindmar. I understand that there is a law that critical race theory cannot be taught in Iowa. However, there was a news article recently where the person spearheading this committee that I believe will be bringing, or trying to bring, that to this district said that we will not allow this law to keep us from reaching our goals. There was also something in that article that said that the district would be maneuvering around the law. Those types of things lead a lot of people to believe that critical race theory is going to be brought into this district, circumventing the law through groups, possible staff bringing that in outside the law. I want to be clear that there are a lot of us who are not going to allow that to happen. We will not allow that to be happening. We are not going to poison our children's minds with that garbage. Secondly, regarding the 500 signatures needed for petitions, I think I was told by administration that the old way of getting something on the agenda is still a viable way to get something on the agenda, I believe, that would be good if we could make something public to say that you could reach out to your board members, who could then take that to the president or the superintendent of the district to get something on, on the agenda. And if that's not the case, I would like to be told that that is not the case. I think the, the public should know that, and I believe that we should not be told that to get something on the agenda, we have to have 500 signatures on a petition. And by the way, there is a large group of people that will, by the end of this year, be able to have 500 signatures within days, if not hours. So keep that in mind. We are going to change things here at Lindmar.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight?
Good evening. Almost didn't make it tonight, but I know how much you guys would sorely miss me and my sidekick here, so I figured I'd let it swing by. Matt kind of stole my thunder there on the petition.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Cody and I. One child in the district so far. Anyway, back to the petition there. I would appreciate an update on that, whether or not we need electronic format or physical copies. I don't know if you put that out recently, but the last time I checked, that wasn't updated. Just for information for those at home that may be gathering signatures, I think that'd be helpful to clarify. I'm not gonna bring up anything with the mandate, mask mandate for K-6 tonight. I just wanted to touch base on the petition front, and more so for the folks at home. If they wanted to learn more about anything I've been talking about, they can feel free to email an email I've set up. It'd be petitionlm@gmail.com. We can talk about that and gather some more signatures that way. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Ethan Basier. I have one child so far in the school district, hopefully more to join. We'll see how this year goes. Generally speaking, I believe that people of Lindmar School District choose to take pride in their community. I'm not just talking about the school or the athletics. I'm also talking about the businesses and families that choose this district to be a part of their community, and they invest their pride in making these schools and neighborhoods great. Director Sirda is a perfect example of this. I and many others chose to go out and help and serve this community after making sure that our families were safe after the storm. At the forum, candidates who are presently on the board and the candidates who are vying for their spots have stated frequently that their intention is to follow a transparent and evidence-based approach. I have sent emails asking for the present members of the boards for the evidence, although not expecting a response since the recurring theme a lot at these board meetings is how the school board refuses to reply to the parents. Showing once again that these platitudes espoused by the board members are empty at best and deceiving at worst. By refusing to show the evidence, if there is any, used to deem it necessary to mask our children does not promote the transparency that is promised and compromise the evidence, if there was any to begin with. What is demonstrated is that this board finds my child and every other child in the district acceptable recipients of the selfish power grab that you guys display. Empty sympathies that display your lack of backbone. It would be too politically inconvenient for this board to allow the parents and families to make their own decisions for themselves and their families. Instead, you make yourselves feel better, feel empowered, so when you look yourselves in the mirror, you say, even though you disagree with me, I was able to make them do what I want. Every news, mainstream or not, has stated, probably reluctantly, that younger children, especially the ones, elementary children that I'm talking about, are at lower risk to contracting, being symptomatic, and dying of COVID. Using your own Lindmar School website, COVID Tractor, the board deemed it that the increase of 10 cases in the nine elementary schools was sufficient to mask every child in those schools. Coincidentally, the numbers of cases have stayed the same since you have reinstated this mask mandate. Although the questions I have sent regarding the evidence you may or may not have in question, you have used your power grab to appease your guilt from behind those, from hiding behind the politicians or the hesitant to show support and empower the parents to make their own decision and to see what's best for their children. If you are scared to release the evidence you claim to have regarding your decision, or you find yourself apprehensive in having transparency with the community you want to serve, I just have one question added on to the questions that I listed in the email. I just ask, why haven't you resigned? This mandate is founded on politicking and stripping the parents of the right to choose what's best for their children. I'd appreciate it if you stopped trying to parent my child and leave that to me. Thanks for your time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to approach the board?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gretchen Lawyer, and I have raised my family in Marion, and it's very important to me. I'm speaking tonight to show my support and express my support for the equity work that the Lindmar District has embarked upon, and I really appreciate that Lindmar started the Equity Advisory Committee. I believe that this creates safe spaces for students who may normally not feel safe if they feel marginalized, and they have support where they can be themselves. Equity, really, it means every child, every day. And so when we think of equity, we think of including all students. Students with different racial backgrounds, ethnic backgrounds, ability backgrounds, students with disabilities, they may have reading difficulties, students that just may feel a need to express themselves in a different way, who learn differently. So I really appreciate that Lindmar is really taking a step in that direction, and it helps not just the students in the community of Marion and Lindmar, but also all areas that work on equity issues. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to approach the board?
Good evening, members. I'm Scott Fowles. I'm actually, I know you all know me, so, but I get it for the record. I just wanted to briefly mention that there is a significant number of people that are in this district that support academic freedom. And I'm often stunned at the individuals who will come up here and proclaim liberty and freedom and genuflection to the Constitution, yet would, quite frankly, muzzle that academic freedom. Moreover, there seems to be a fundamental misunderstanding of who really sets the education standards and that that's done at the state level. There's not a lot that you guys get to do. House File 802, to which some folks reference, doesn't limit any of the academic topics that can be covered, and it shouldn't, because there should be freedom of inquiry, and everyone should feel safe in being able to ask those kinds of questions. That's something that's important, and that's part of what makes this school great. That's part of what makes our colleges great, and that's part of what makes this nation great. Thank you guys very much for your service, and I appreciate your time. Good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. Oh, there is another person. Okay.
Good evening to each and every last one of you. Joshua Mylum. I have several nieces, and I've worked with several programs in this district, and I'm a resident of this district. And also, I represented mentor many kids in this district. And I'd have to say that, first of all, let me applaud you and thank you for the great work that you're doing with the Equity Committee. I would have to say that I beg to differ on some things, but when we talk about freedom, we talk about freedom, we talk about the freedom of every and all children. And I thank God for the opportunity that you have permitted, that you've allowed certain programs to take place, for that factor. We cannot forget about these committees of the LGBTQ. We cannot forget about these committees and these groups that support blacks. We cannot forget about these committees, these groups that support Al Salvadorian, Mexican, all children. And for that, we have to think about all children. We talk about prairie pride, but that pride does not fall on one group. That pride falls on all groups. And so I thank you, and it's my, it's my hope that you continue in this work for the committee, in that great work, because we want to, we don't ever want to forget about the lost, the least, or the left out. And when we talk about all children, that goes across the board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. One more.
Good evening. My name is Owen Sunin. So I'm a high school freshman. I'm just trying to give some student insight into some of the more controversial issues here, so. One of the things that come up, has come up is mask mandates and the use of masks in general. So, I don't, I don't care about your political views or any of your personal views on the subject. I'm just here to give you some of the facts and what I believe. So, my mom, she works at Mercy Care, and I have a cousin who works at these actual labs that help produce and fabricate all these vaccines and give medical insight on these subjects. So, I just want to say that masks work, and, uh, so, I don't know. I've heard that a lot of people kind of disagree about like the effectiveness and how well they work, but of all the people I've talked to, and of all the experts I personally know, they can all agree universally that masks are effective at blocking coronavirus and other viruses in general. And I think that depending on your personal views, again, this isn't relevant to this topic here or to what I'm trying to get out, but I would, as a student, not be opposed to a mask mandate at the high school or this district in general. Thank you.
Any others? Okay. That's seen in any, we will move on to superintendent update.
Good evening, everyone. Couple of quick things to update the board on and the community as well. I'll start with our Lindmar Foundation. There's some news coming out of our foundation that our current director, Shelley Woods, has resigned her position. Michelle has been with the district and the foundation for a long time. Want to publicly thank her for her leadership and commitment in serving not only the foundation but the district as a whole. She will be missed, but I also know the foundation is in a great spot because of her dedication and her work. The foundation is working immediately to find her replacement. So look forward to hopefully having a great candidate pool. Encourage everybody that's interested to check that position out and continue the great work the foundation provides for our students and our staff throughout the district. So, once again, just want to make sure to publicly thank Shelley for her long time working the district and serving the district through the foundation. I want to give a really brief human resources update. Everybody that's out and about knows that workforce shortages are everywhere. Schools are not immune from this problem, as we've talked about in the past. We've had a recent update from our Carla Christian, our human resources director, as well. I wanted to kind of touch base on a few things that we are trying to do to help address those problems, kind of giving updates since the last time she shared some information. We're seeing shortage areas across all of our departments, from teachers, ed assistants, bus drivers, kitchen staff, subs in all areas. It's definitely not limited to one part of our district or the other. And we've been able to make things work across the district, but that's become challenging on a daily basis. So we've been very proactive in some things we're trying to do, and we have some other ideas going forward. We'll continue to do to try to improve some things there as well. But a few things I want to give you a quick update on. We have made some changes, and we are offering a bonus for student support associates that sub for more than 10 days. So people that have been here more than 10 days, there's different steps they can do to earn those bonuses. We've increased the pay for classified staff members who are certified to sub for teachers as well. I think that's one other way we're trying to really cover our classroom teachers and give them the sub, sub coverage that they need. We bumped up our salary for bus drivers that are driving extra trips. So if they're driving activity routes or sporting events, bump those routes up to match the base salary for our regular routes as well. That has been a shortage area and a challenge for us to get those covered on a daily and weekly basis as well. One other thing we've done is we've eliminated barriers for subs for teachers that qualify for the long-term sub-to-teacher rate. In the past, it used to be based on the number of consecutive days that they sub-served in those roles. It's now based on the number of total days they serve at Lindmar. So we're continuing to try to do some things to really attract and keep the people we have in our district and make sure we try to fill our gaps as best as we possibly can to best serve our students and our families, too. So, so those are some things that have happened just since the start of the school year. We have several more things that are in the works for the upcoming months as well. My short-term solutions, as we also are spending some time looking at some longer-term plans, too. But I wanted to give you a quick update because we definitely are trying to be as responsive as possible to the demand that's out there. And then the last thing I'll just mention for tonight is I want to make sure to kind of revisit with the board, get back on your radar again, which it's always there, I guess, with our return to learn plans. We are closely monitoring the availability of the vaccine for our younger students. It sounds like that time may be coming in the next few weeks, if not sooner. So we're monitoring that very carefully and closely. We did make a commitment, the board did it back in September, I believe it was, to list the mask mandate when we have 60 days after the vaccine availability for our younger students. So once we have an official vaccine date, we'll work out a timeline and a communication plan for our families. So that is still very much on our radar. Continue to watch that very carefully and stay in touch with Lynn County Public Health as we approach that opportunity. And then along with that, when that takes place, I think we also need to have some conversations as a board about some other changes in our return to learn plan to consider as well. Those things would include allowing visitors and volunteers, backing to our elementary and intermediate schools, opportunity for families to make a change from online learning to in-person if they desire as the situation changes, to pretty much match the 60-day timeline that we're looking at for the vaccines. So I know that's still on your radar all the time, but with that, hopefully that window approaching here relatively quickly, we'll start to work on some more specific things to, to share with the board and with our community once we have dates really established. So, excited to have that chance come forward. Looking forward to taking those steps when it's safe to do so. So, other than that, open up for any questions the board members may have for me.
I just want to thank Carla and her team, and of course you as part of that. But addressing workforce shortages in a time when we've already got a set budget and working within the confines of what we have, but still trying to solve those issues and make sure that our staff are supported, I really appreciate the efforts that are going into that. I know this is not an easy thing to overcome, so I just wanted to say, good job. Thank you, and I can't wait to see what else you guys come up with as the year progresses.
Yeah, after that, thanks to Human Resources Department, our business office, working together to problem solve and work through, finding solutions as quickly as possible in ways to help support our staff. And we've heard from our staff that said they've noticed a difference by the changes, almost immediately, too. So, every little bit helps right now, as we're trying to cover everything every day.
Anyone else with a question? All right.
Thank you.
All right. So next, we are going to move on to Venture Academic Update. Mark, you'd like to start for us?
Check this really quick. Okay, my name is Mark Hutchison. I'm a high school director of teaching and learning and also director of Venture Academics.
I'm Alyssa McDowell, and I'm the strategic partnership coordinator for Venture.
So we're gonna give a, a quick overview, I guess, of what Venture is, where we've been, where we're headed. I'm here to give the 30,000-foot view, so I'll start off with that. We also have one of our teachers here, and we'll introduce those in a little bit, or him in a little bit, as well as his students. Venture Academics, and those that are on the board have seen this, seen this before. So Venture Academics is a project-based learning program, and it's created to engage student learning through real-world experience. Alyssa will give you a little bit more on that, but in, in general, it's, it's project-based learning. And there are a lot of different kinds of programs out there, and you can go around the state, and you can look at them, you can go around the nation, look at them. There are a lot of them that are modeled around community service, a lot of them that are modeled around work-based learning. This is, this is definitely a project-based learning program. Venture's mission is learning, active exploration, innovation, and context-involved learner's adventure. So our goal is, yeah, we have a lot of goals. It's about getting our students out in the community. It's about engaging with community partners. It's about involving yourself in the workplace. It's about... It's about social consciousness. It's about a lot of different kinds of things. However, at the core, it's about learning. And our goal is simply to make sure that students have the knowledge and the skills to get them where they want to go. And we're going to use project-based learning to help them do that. We have approximately 100 students this year that participate in Venture. 10 different strands, and you can see some of the strands off on the side. I'm sure I'll miss one if I try to name them. We have life science, we have earth science, we have behavioral science, we have environmental science. We have writing, we have advanced business, we have business foundations, we have digital design and communication, we have civics. So 10 different strands, I think I probably missed one in there. Strands are one semester each, and students participate in a strand for half a day of each semester. And I'll show you a little mock-up of that in just a second. But the idea is that normally in our high school, we have block classes or skinny classes. Our skinny classes are about 40 minutes long, a little bit longer. Our block classes are about 80 minutes long. A Venture strand is about three hours long. So we have kind of a double block of time for our students to engage in project-based learning. And that's each semester. Our strands consist of project work and content standards for associated Linmar High School coursework. Students are in credit for completion of embedded courses. And I'll show you another example of that in a minute. But what we're talking about here is that in our project-based learning program, what we have is we have a strand, for instance, behavioral science. And within that strand, we have embedded coursework. In the behavioral science strand, we have psychology, we have sociology, we have college reading, and then we have a Venture project credit. Each of those that I've just named, those are courses in the main building. So sociology is a course in the main building, psychology is a course in the main building. Okay, all of those are embedded in a Venture strand. And we will have students that, when they engage in that behavioral science strand, they'll be earning 20 credits, they'll be earning five credits for each of those courses that I just named. So one of the important things here, I think, that helps keep us grounded as a program and help keep our students grounded, is the fact that we have these standards that are associated with traditional high school coursework. So the traditional high school courses might have eight or 10 standards that are associated with them, and standards are basically statements of learning, statements of knowledge and skill that the student will gain as they go through the course. And each of those courses that are embedded in the strand bring with them those standards. And so our students will be gaining the knowledge and the skill and gaining the same proficiency in those standards through our Venture coursework that they would be gaining in the main building. To talk a little bit more about that, we do, one of the unique features of Venture is that our teachers are actually traditional teachers. They teach in the main building part-time, and they teach in the Venture area part-time. So as we talk about, say, the behavioral science strand, and we have psychology as one of the elements of that strand, our psychology teacher at Venture will be partnering with psychology teachers in the main building on a weekly basis to talk about curriculum, to talk about student progress, to talk about the needs of the course. In addition, we will also be collecting information from our Venture strands with regard to how the students are progressing relative to the standards. We will collect that information in the same way that we're going to collect the information in the main building. So we'll have a way to calibrate with the main building as to how our students are performing on those standards that are associated with the coursework embedded in the strands. And then the last thing I wanted to hit really quick before I turn it over to Alyssa is that we have received some really generous financial support from a lot of those entities that are listed up there. Linmar School Foundation, Community School District, the high school, the Iowa STEM Best Program, Marion Economic Development Corporation, and then the Linmar High School Class of 1976 has also given us a gift. But we have a number of different financial supporters that are allowing us to do the things that we're doing with our Venture program, which by the way is on the third floor, starting on the third floor of the LRC. Hopefully, we're going to grow. All right, Alyssa?
Thank you. So this is the sample schedule of a Venture student you can see. So for the second semester, the first half of their day, that Venture Business Foundations, and then those are their other classes that you can see there. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the community engagement piece of Venture. This is a very important part of the program. We really feel that it's valuable for our students to have those interactions with our business community. There's a lot to be gained from the business community's years of experience. And I think it's really valuable, too. One of the things that, you know, we hear from students is it can feel like a lot of pressure to make a decision about the rest of their lives, whether it's, you know, college or trade school or whatever it looks like for them. And one of the things that's a common denominator, as I've spoken with different businesses and different professionals, is a lot of times where they are now is not where they started. And I feel like that's a really valuable thing. So every time we have a speaker into a classroom, we ask them, how did you get where you are today? What were the different twists and turns? You know, how did you arrive where you are? And I feel like that's a really valuable thing for students to hear. So when we designed Venture, we decided we wanted to have some clearly defined ways for businesses to engage. A lot of this, as Mark mentioned, is project-based, but not all businesses are in a position to offer a project for students to work on. So we wanted some lower levels as far as commitment for businesses to be able to engage with. So we have class speaker, a tour, a business tour, and then the other three are more involved with project work. An advisor is someone that is kind of on-call. If students are working on a project and they have a specific question or need advice about something, they can reach out. And I've been working to build a database. I have about 75 contacts I've made in the community and just continuing to build that list of different people that we can reach out to as we work on projects. The mentor is someone that walks along a whole project with students, but didn't necessarily provide the project. And then a project partner is someone that provided a project for students to work on for their business, and they're available to mentor them and answer questions as they go. So these are a few things that we've done. And the top there, out on the farm, that's Etzel Sugar Grove Farm owned by Indian Creek Nature Center. It's an organic farm, but they also have some traditional farming methods. So we went out there with some earth science students and learned about biodiversity and the differences between methods of farming. That was a really fun trip. And then the bottom right-hand corner, that's a master gardener, Phil Fister, that came and worked with students. And then Liz Mathis there is on the left, she came to speak to some government students that are working on a bill-writing project right now. So this is a list of some of the speakers that we've had come in the last few weeks. As you can see, kind of a variety of careers that have been represented. Up in the right-hand corner is Steve Cooper, City of Marion Stormwater Manager. And he came in and explained to students, and kind of taught them the basics of using JAS software, which is Global Information System, and kind of how he uses it in his career. That was really fascinating. The bottom right-hand corner, master gardener Sylvia Street allows students to come. Students went on kind of a garden hop to about four different community gardens in the area and learned about different things that they do. And then the bottom left-hand corner there, Paramedic came and spoke with some biology students. So a few more pictures of things. Took some students out to Makoka the Caves, went to HACAP to learn about food insecurity and how organizations meet needs, which was a really great experience. And, you know, I realize a lot of times students want to be involved in their community, but they don't necessarily know where to start. And a lot of students were like, wow, this is really cool what you do here. How could I come and volunteer? And so the volunteer coordinator that was giving us a tour said, well, you can go to our website, and then you click here, and there's a sign-up. And a couple of students were very interested in being involved. And then the top left-hand corner, that was Catherine Miller. She's a young entrepreneur that owns her own flower business. And she, it was very interesting. She meets with prospective brides, and she says, what type of flowers do you want? And she plants them and grows them to order. And so she was sharing about some of the marketing things she's done, because that's not something that really exists in Iowa, so she's had to kind of sell the whole experience. And students had some really great questions. That was our Business Foundation students that were learning about that. And we just wrapped up our first quarter, did a survey with students, asking them what they liked about Venture. So these are a few comments, the feeling of family and teamwork within the classroom, non-traditional classroom setting, learning experience. I like that we are more independent and like the projects. That's been a common theme as I've, I do some of the driving to some of these off-site activities, and so I'll ask students questions about what they're learning and just about themselves. It's been great to get to know some of the students in our program. And one of the things they've said consistently is, we feel like we're given a lot of responsibility. We feel like we're treated like adults. You know, that we're given these projects and we're being trusted to manage our time and ask for help when we need it. And I feel like that's such a valuable thing. No matter what they do in their future, the skills that they're learning are going to serve them well into adulthood. And then just a few more pictures of some things we had. I mentioned earlier Liz Mathis came in with her campaign manager. And then we also had someone that works for Ashley Henson's office come and share. And both of them did such a great job, kind of steering clear of some of the partisan politics and just talking generally about their experiences. And one of the students, the students write thank-you notes to all of our speakers. That's something that the teachers have initiated, and I love that we do that. And so one of the students I saw in his note said, after we talked today in class, I went home and had a two-hour conversation about politics with my dad, and we've never talked like that before. I was like, wow, that's awesome. I'm so glad that, you know, this is initiating things like that. And just wanted to end with this final quote from a student asked what she likes about Venture. It's great collaborating with the other strands in community and refining skills I can use for the rest of my life, critical thinking, creativity, complex communication, collaboration. I will definitely be taking more Venture classes in the future if my schedule allows it. And I think that's a sign of success if they want to come back, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa, and thank you to Alyssa. Alyssa has done just a tremendous job putting a lot of this together with the different experiences for the students. I see Nick Glue over here. Nick and Emily and Medco have just been tremendous partners for us, helping us to make some of these connections. So thank you to both. Very, very well done. Next thing that we have is, we actually have a group of students and a teacher, one of our teachers in the Venture strand, Chris Tilges. Tilges, sorry, I always mispronounce that. But Chris is going to introduce his students. The students actually gave us a presentation, meaning myself and Mr. Biscard, Alyssa, Nathan, and explained a lot of what they did with the design project. You can see the design project over here on the wall, but it was tremendous. We have a fine group of students involved in Venture right now, and Chris is going to introduce a few of them to you. Need to get you out of this.
Like Mark said, my name is Chris Tilges, and I am one of the Venture teachers here at Linmar High School. Education is a complicated creature, isn't it? But it's also a very exciting time to be in education. I'm really excited to share some things happening within my Venture strand. And so we're going to go through some slides here. I also have some students behind me that gave up their evening to come and speak about the things that are happening within my course and the good things that are happening with Venture. I said I'd plant myself here and not move, and I'm finding myself already moving, so we'll try to stay stuck here. So this is my eighth year at Linmar High School. My family is right up there. I thought I'd pull up that because family's really important to me, and kind of it goes right into the next slide about family. So my spouse is an art teacher. Jen teaches at Marion High School. She's been teaching at least twice as long as I've been teaching, and she enjoys her profession. It's kind of a unique environment where you have two art teachers in the household. So my son gets lots and lots of advice. We have all sorts of art materials around the house, and he's starting to come into his own style and what he prefers for mediums and stuff. So he's a sophomore at Marion High School as well. What am I doing at Linmar High School? I'm inspiring students to become creative, caring, and passionate individuals. I enjoy teaching graphics and fine arts. Recently, I've been teaching more of the graphics courses. When I was hired, I was given the task of actually starting the graphics courses here, so nothing existed prior to my employment. So it's been a lot of fun to create the courses, create the curriculum, get students excited about all the possibilities of career paths in graphics. And I'm also heading up the Venture Digital Design and Communication class. Our design family, I think of the family that I go home to every night. I also think about the family that I have here. I spend three hours a day with my students in super blocks. I've got 10 kiddos, so I think they share that same thought that we really function as kind of a family unit. And when we function that way, we can be very supportive of each other. And I think learning, it becomes really natural when those things take place and that environment's kind of structured that way. So I've got eight of them there. We were fortunate enough to present to Shannon and the associate superintendent, some other individuals, and they had a blast, and they left, and they're like, so who was that? And I'm like, that was the superintendent and associate. And I said, so you guys just nailed it, so tonight's going to be really easy for you guys. How does Venture Digital Design and Communication equip our students? So Venture's creative approach, connecting real world, right? We've got business partners, we've got people in the community, we have other teachers. So we're really making those connections and teaching kids that those skill sets that they're learning in the classroom can be utilized outside of the classroom, right? We're putting all those things together. It's complicated, there's lots of things happening in the classroom, and they're doing a great job of like handling all of that. Collaborating with other Venture strands, I think I can actually click on this. Some of this I made interactive here. So I'm working with Ms. Dill's class, and we're putting together a children's book illustrations. So they're kind of in the middle of this. So there are some illustrations. I actually just paired it up with some background artwork that's been created. So they're using some fun digital equipment to create that. Just going to go back to the presentation. That worked good. We're partnering with, oops, we're partnering with local businesses such as CR Signs. They're a sign company, I actually used to work with Doug Stansel over there. He came in and said that he wanted to do some projects with us and kind of get us involved in that realm of design work. And so this is something that I showed the kids last week about how you can take your design skill sets and take those on to and become a designer within the signage industry, which is something that I actually didn't know about when I graduated from U and I. It was just kind of oblivious to that. So there's lots of things that can be done within graphics. Bridging the technology tool belt. We've got lots of things that the students get to learn here at the high school. When I went to school at U and I, I went down and bought the Adobe Suite myself, learned the program myself. Here, they have the ability to learn about Illustrator, Photoshop. We've got iPads, Apple pencils. We have a lot of business partners, and the foundation has really helped equip us to be successful. We've got some large, we've got a large-format printer up at the high school that actually we use to print the posters. We've got a mobile lab upstairs with 27-inch monitors. They can plunk those down wherever they want. They can actually plug into those through the USB or actually through the HDMI port, and they can start designing actually wherever they need to on campus. Some soft skills that we, we go through soft skills, and we learn about these probably daily. We kind of cycle through all these things happening, communication, self-motivation. I won't go through all of them, but a big one that stands out to me, kind of going back to that kind of family premise, is compassion for each other, just compassion for people in general is really important, especially kind of in the times we're living. It's really important that I model that for my students, and patience. I have a kid at home. I try to reserve enough patience, so when I go home, I have patience for my family. Sometimes better than, you know, some nights are better than others. But having patience with our young children, our soon-to-be-adults is, I think, really key in them gaining our trust and gaining that appreciation and empowering them to have that passion that we have for teaching. It just gets them really excited about what they can do, what the possibilities are. Engagement through creativity, a big thing about, when I teach, I really want my students to be original in their creativity. You know, the saying that everything has been done already, sure, that's happened, but for my students to experience for the first time, that creative, that conception of that idea is they can own that idea. And that, for me, is a very unique experience that I want all my students to have. So, did I put that up there in the slide? I might not have. So that is just one of many skill sets that we learn in the class. And the skill sets that I teach them should be transferable to other education courses, to other fields. that I teach them should be transferable to other education courses, to other fields, and they can take those skill sets with them after they graduate high school. I also put formative guided practice. There's an example here, I'm not gonna click on it, but it goes through guided practice that just doesn't leave them out there kind of on their own. It helps kind of navigate those waters of the creative process so they can be successful throughout the entire process. So, this is just some social justice badges. We actually made a assessment, turned it into a project, and then we went ahead and actually made buttons, and, I don't know, we put out like 500 buttons at the high school, and they were just gobbled up by students, 'cause it, you know, it was a really powerful thing that visually you can, you can make a big difference with what you create, not always with what you say. And I kind of can fly under that radar with being an art teacher, because my work is usually visual, and I'm in the position where I can actually talk about it tonight, which is pretty cool. Student feedback. So, what I'd like my students to do is, they're gonna come up here individually. I have each one of their posters up here on the board for you guys to see, and they're gonna talk a little bit about what they've learned firsthand experience and how Venture, how the Venture class has benefited them. So, we're gonna start with Haley Wade. So Haley, come on up. So I'm gonna have you stand there.
I'm gonna move.
And you might move a little bit, but go ahead, and I'll turn it over to you to talk a little bit about what you've experienced.
Hi, I'm Haley. I'm in 12th grade here at Linmore, and I'm in the Venture Digital Design. One thing that I learned over this course of designing this poster is how precise you have to be with certain things. You have to go over it multiple times, redo a, I had to redo this design at least 10 times, because sometimes things just don't work. And that's kind of what I learned in this course so far, is you have to adapt to your surroundings and adapt to certain things that don't work, and work with what you have and build off of what you have. A year ago, when I signed up for this class, it was kind of a dip in the water, 'cause I didn't know if I really wanted to do design, and I was like, you know what, let's just try it out. And now that I've gone through this process and the family that I've created with my design students and peers and Mr. T, where did he go? There he is. He's kind of like the father of design in our class, and you can come to class every day, and you just feel at home. And now I feel like everything's falling into place to where I know exactly what I wanna do with my future, and that's really nice to know. And not only have I learned from this poster and this project, I've learned from Mr. T too. He's taught me multiple things on placing and visually. Some of the icons, you could not understand what they said at all, and I thought it looked good. I was like, hey, you know what, that looks great. And I showed it to Mr. T, and he's like, "That does not look good." And so, you know what? Not the exact words, but that's kind of how some students take it. But it's okay, 'cause constructive criticism is also really nice when you think you have something amazing, and you go to somebody and they criticize it just a little bit, and it just makes you even better, so that you can come out at your best. And something that has benefited me also is that I'm gaining more opportunities for my future. My mom actually has a possibility of setting up at an internship at her job at Collins Aerospace, so that is really nice to have under my belt possibly, and those are the things I've learned. So, thank you for your time.
Chase Plotten's gonna speak next.
Hello, everybody. My name is Chase Plotten. I am a senior here at Linmore High School. So, one thing that I learned during my time here at Venture with Mr. T is, you can't always just look at your art and just say that it's perfect no matter what. You'll be scared to take criticism sometimes, and you just have to learn not to take it personally when you, when you, sorry. Yeah, when you get feedback, you have to take it pers, you can't take it personally. You have to...
I think you take feedback really well and learn from it.
Yes. You have to...
Yeah, go ahead. I can speak on behalf of Chase. Chase has done a really good job of allowing himself to be open to criticism, and I, it's interesting to hear how students think of criticism and then how I portray criticism, because I think that I'm very careful with my words, but... But I guess, you know, you can think of it as anything that you do in life, you know, there's people that are going to look at that and sometimes say something that's going to help you get to that next level, right? So if I want my students to be average designers, you know, they can stay average designers, and I can pass them on, and, but if I want them to get to that next level, that next rung on the ladder, I have to push them. I have to, I have to know them well enough that they trust me to give them that feedback that they're going to take that feedback and grow from it. So, whether that's designing, whether that's, maybe they come in and they've had something else that's happened in their life that they just need some feedback on, right? Some, maybe it's some motivation, maybe it's some encouragement, that's where that kind of family unit feels really good, really strong, when we're together, and they can take my constructive criticism, and they can do something positive with it. So, Chase has done that with his poster. It's really solid, feels complete, the hierarchies are there, the color works, it's readable, so he's done everything that I've asked him to do, and done some. You know, I'm really proud of all of my students. They've grown tremendously in one quarter. You know, they've learned Illustrator, they've learned Photoshop. They've, they've really come alive with their creative abilities, and some of them I haven't had in any other creative classes. They're coming to me without any prior fine arts courses or graphics courses, and they're, you know, they're ready to go, which is pretty cool. Yeah. We've got Ashlyn Hastings, who's gonna speak a little bit.
Yeah. So I've had Mr. T since freshman. Definitely my first class I had, see, as a junior, I've had him for now, what, three years? And he's taught me a lot throughout the years. Like, I've definitely grown since little freshman me. I, I don't know, I've grown a lot through what he's taught me, and we have grown as a community in our class, and I've learned to become more vocal and outgoing with other people, even though I didn't know them. Of course, when you first go in class, it's like very quiet, you don't know anyone, but then as we go along, we're now, what, a quarter in? We are basically like family, and, I don't know, everything that we've learned together has been like as one, and we've all like grown as one. Yeah. So, with this poster, I learned how to make things not as much pink. So, so at first, I had a lot of pink, like, maybe you don't wanna look at it, so I added a lot more black to contrast with the pink, and that was from the criticism that I got from Mr. T. There were some choice words. Anyway, just kidding. Yeah, I don't know, I've learned a lot with Mr. T, and we've definitely had a lot of days where we just want to give up. Like, especially with our new project, we just burn out super easy, 'cause things just don't go as well, especially when you think you're gonna get a project, and, well, the project isn't great, and you find out that you're gonna have to restart everyone's project that they did beforehand, and we did it, and we are almost done with it, thankfully. What else? I don't know, I, I try every day to come to class, because it's something that I actually enjoy. Like, definitely don't like school, but with, with Venture, I do enjoy going to class, and when I do not show up because I have a medical excuse or because of other reasons in life that just appear from everyday life, I get a call from Haley Wade saying, "Where are you?" And that is when I respond, "Not coming to class," and then I have to make everything up, but it's not as much as it used to be making up, since we do have three-hour classes, so we get a lot of time together. Another thing I found out was that Mr. T is now like my father. He has, he's known me for like three years, and that's like three years too long to know me. He's dealt with a lot. We've had a lot of cries in his class, and we've, we've gone through thick and thin, and I don't think I would be the same person without you. Yeah. So, I think that's all for me, but now we've got Améris.
By the way, I think the limited color scheme works really well in this piece. Améris, come on up.
All right, so I am Améris, and I am a junior. I am one of those students that Mr. T has never had. No previous design at all, knew nothing. I can't draw very well, but it's okay. I learned as I went through, and with the poster, I realized that I need a lot of feedback, because most of the time I keep to myself, and I don't like hearing other people's opinions, 'cause sometimes I feel like I get judged, but with my little family, with my brothers and sisters, so-and-so, I guess you could say, I felt more safe, like showing them what I, what my poster was, and even if they didn't always agree with what I said, I always took it, took it well, I think, most of the time? Okay. So, yeah, communication was, I feel like it's getting easier, and I am definitely a different person in my Venture class than I am in all my other classes, just because it is a little bit smaller, and I am louder. Sorry about that, Mr. T. But in all my other classes, I kind of just sit and I take everything in, but I feel like with Venture, I am able to express myself more and have more input in like just the day, and it is three hours, which can be a bit much, but we always have our little breaks or walks, which, you know, help free the brain of any stress, and, and food. Food is very helpful some days. But, yeah, I don't really know what else but to say, besides that it's really fun. And, I mean, last year when I signed up for it, everyone's like, "It's like three hours, Améris. Like, you're gonna have to be in that class for three hours for half the year." I'm like, hmm, maybe, I don't know. They tried talking me out of it, but in the end, I'm glad that I stayed with it, so, yeah.
I appreciate everybody's feedback, and I appreciate you guys giving us the time to talk about the Venture program tonight. It might have gone a little bit long. Some quick takeaways from the presentation, I would say that meaningful learning, which contains an element of creativity, as well as a degree of difficulty, results in a high level of engagement, and I've seen that happen in my classrooms. Real-world applications of projects allow students to transfer skill sets acquired in the classroom. So I think of it as a tool belt, what can I equip my students with, so they, when they leave my classroom, whether it's a skill, whether it's talking, whether it's listening, what is that skill set that's gonna help them? And I try to give them as many skill sets as I can in that, in that short amount of time that I get them. The project-based environment can yield a variety of skill sets, many of which can be used across multiple classrooms and future work environments, so speaking exactly to that point. Passion and excitement towards learning is contagious. If you come into the classroom and you're excited about what you're doing, your students are gonna be excited about that. If you can find ways to allow students that creative freedom within your class, they're gonna grab that and run with it. And I'm, I've seen it. I've seen it in my classrooms, I've seen it in the Venture program in this first quarter, and it's really exciting. It's really exciting. Guided independence, shared ownership promotes buy-in, so giving students that level of independence and trusting them that they're gonna do what they need to do to get it done, that's difficult sometimes, sometimes to do as an educator, but it gives them those skill sets that they're ultimately gonna need when they leave the school. So practicing that in my classroom is a safe place to do that, to make those mistakes, to fumble a little bit, to get discouraged, and then get built back up, and how do you build yourself back up when you fall down, right? Last one, creating a safe, supportive, and caring classroom is really as important as what we teach. So, the curriculum's gotta be there, right? I'm a teacher, gotta have some good curriculum, but I also have to be there for my kids. So, creating that space where they can come in, they're excited, they're excited, they're awake before I'm awake, they're ready to go, they're ready to get it done. Three hours is sometimes not enough, so it's really cool to be part of the Venture.
That's why we need coffee.
That's why we need coffee. So there's, there's a bunch of our AM kiddos. After an activity for V45, we meet together as a big group every Monday, and we, we talk about how the specific standards and how they connect with, with our learning, and we do activities together, and it gives us time to meet as a big group, which is really cool. So, again, I appreciate your, your time tonight, the extended time that you've given us to talk, and I'm looking forward to growing the Venture program and growing the, the graphics program here at Linmore High School, so.
Thank you so much.
You can tell Chris is a great teacher, you can tell his kids love him, that's definitely taken him a long way. Couple things they didn't say about the projects. This is one of the projects they've done, it's kind of where they're at right now, but what you see up there, you see a bunch of different icons that represent the six universal constructs that we involve in, in every one of our Venture strands and every project that we do. But those icons that they've made up there, those are all brand-new, unique. They didn't just cut them off the internet and paste them, they created every one of them individually to represent the concept that they were to represent. So, just an outstanding job. You can see the variety and the creative minds, the difference in the creative minds who are involved in that. Really proud of these guys for what they've done, and I wanna take a little bit of time here and give you a chance for questions, and guys, if you'd like to stand up and come up here really quick, if there are questions for the students, questions for Alyssa, questions for Mark, great time for that.
Any questions?
Go for it.
Got a couple things. First of all, I wanna thank you, students. I know when you come into a place like this and you have no idea who is here and who we are, you know, that takes and speaks for some of the things, those soft skills that your teacher was talking about, so, thank you. It's not an easy thing to do, and as you're nodding yes, okay, I'm glad you agree with me there. One of the questions that I do have is that Nick Glue is in our audience. One of the questions that I do have is that Nick Glue is in our audience and stuff and head of Medco. I was wondering if what they, they learned in the Venture class can lead to one of two things. Either maybe a summer part-time job. I know Haley mentioned something with her mom in a relationship to Collins Avionics. But obviously, there's a lot of other things in our community that can do that. Or maybe even if not a summer job, some kind of internship that they can take it, Mr. Tillis was talking about, take it to a next level. Well, there's passing the class and meeting the standards and then they're saying, "Hey, do I want to take this to a possibility of a future job or a career?" And I wondered if, if there's that in the works somewhere, either one of those.
Absolutely. So we're working with Workplace Learning Connection, using some of the, the things that they've already built, the internships, the job shadows, aware of what they're doing. But we're also open and plan for internships to grow out of this program. So if we're working with a business and there's a good connection between maybe one of our students and there's interest expressed on both parts, then we will build out an internship. And then like in this instance, Mr. Till just would sign off on the credit. That's something we already have in place. Barb Schultz does that with the MOC at the high school. And so it would, it would be something very similar to that. And Barb and I have been having different conversations, Mark and I. How would we build this out so that if there is an interest, you know, as we're doing project work, that's something we can provide to our students.
Another thing is, is like we, we can figure out like what we do like and what we absolutely don't. Like we know for sure, we're not going to do that. And it just helps you figure out like what key things you like about each project and like what that can go towards in a job. And then that can also like, oh, you know that you're creative. So then you can use that for your applications and to stand out from other people. And it's a lot of like good, like soft skills like we were talking about. Like you are able to take what we've learned. And so like the whole first quarter, we've been learning things, like how to use the software because some people don't. And learning it, now we are, in the next quarter, going to go towards different projects with other, other groups and other jobs that they can take and use our logos or use what we've given them to maybe use for their own businesses.
And then extending off of what Ashlyn said, it actually sort of mostly feels like you actually had a job shadows, what this class typically, a lot of time feels like because you extend beyond what a typical classroom is. You go through a lot of different types of medias of art, even though it's still electronic. And you end up figuring out what you do like, what you don't like. Whether this is a path you want to take, you can explore, figure out what else you want to do related to art. So like if you, one project, "Oh, I don't like this." Then you can move to the next one. "Oh, I really like this one." You can use that to figure out what you want to do outside of your high school career and hopefully find a job and use that expertise in your portfolio to help find a career for yourself outside of school.
Anyone else have any questions?
So this is kind of hitting home for me. So my undergrad is in graphic design. I was a graphic designer after college, all the way through college. That was my part-time job. Everything you're experiencing is exactly what it's like to be a professional graphic designer. And you have picked the one aspect of art that is not about your, solely your creative expression. You are putting your creative expression out there in a very, in a very, in a way that has to be judged. And someone wants to buy it or use it commercially. And that's like the fact that you're already doing that and the skills that you're gaining from the constructive criticism. I've been in those meetings and I put everything into a design and I slide it across the table and they say, "That's not what we were thinking and you ought to go back to square one." That's very real. And so I'm very impressed by what you're learning and what you're accomplishing. I can kind of still do that because I'm not a graphic, I've moved up and on. So that's another thing Alyssa was mentioning, you know, you, you don't always stay with what you started with. I still do graphic design, but it's, it's impressive to hear you talk about how you've moved from being scared to have the criticism and scared to put yourself out there to learning from that feedback and growing because that's going to help you, even if you aren't graphic designers. Like everything you've said tonight is, it speaks to what I've already experienced as a professional. So I just want to say, this is amazing. I'm so impressed. And if you ever have questions, I've been there, so look me up.
That was also something I was going to say tonight. If any of you here in various professions and fields say, "Wow, this sounds really awesome," reach out to me. I'd love to help get you connected with the Venture program if that's something you're interested in.
That was my one question, was how do you want people to contact you if they want to get involved? So thank you for that.
I would agree with what Brett said. All of the things that you guys are learning are going to help you incredibly as you leave high school. These are like communication skills and taking feedback and perseverance and being okay with failure. Like they're going to help you succeed in anything that you want to do. So great job.
All you have to do is yell out Mr. T.
I did want to give you a piece of advice, the burnout. Stop, walk away, come back the next day. Like if you try and force creativity, it does not work. So.
We're, we're to the point now that I'm going to be giving them two additional projects. So once they hit that limit that well, they can, they can switch gears and focus on something else and give that a rest. So they're, they're ready for that stage for sure. So that's an exciting thing that's.
It's kind of like writing something. You write it, you leave it go, come back a day or so later and you take half of it and say, "No way," and you know, and go again. And so it's, it's, it's all great learning and it will help you in the future. That's awesome.
Yeah, it's definitely helps me, like definitely probably shouldn't it with chores, but it does. You look at it and you're like, "Not today." So then you do tomorrow. So then it's kind of in that aspect that you go, you try to accomplish something that you're like, "Yeah, I can do that." Or, "Yeah, there's no way I'm doing that." And you hit it head-on and you see what you can make of it. And if you don't make anything of it, you can always ask someone or ask a peer of some sort that like, "Yeah." How does, how is that going to work?
And when you presented to us earlier, you had talked about the importance of collaboration between each other. Tonight, a lot of that was kind of reference to Mr. Till just in his feedback, constructive criticism he gave. Which is great, but I also heard last time you talked so much about how each other, you could lean on each other for ideas or a safe place to go for feedback on different things and how that was really important as well. And I thought that was a fantastic benefit of the program as well. And I, and I know that Mark kind of started off talking about Ventures, we're still new, we're still working through. A lot of growing pains, learning a lot as we go through this as a system and not just individuals. So thank you for being some of the first students to take that plunge into Venture and provide us some feedback to help us grow. As we continue to look to grow, we're going to have a live learning session for any parent or community members on November 30th at noon and at 5:30. And the whole focus will be about the Venture program. Learn more about it, learn more about where we see it going, ask questions. We really want to see the program continue to build off of the great foundation you've started. So I want to make sure to throw that out there now today as well. And more information will be coming out about that as we get closer. But I want to see Venture continue to build off of the great start we've had, so.
Well, thank you. Anybody else?
Shannon said, "I was excited that we put the Lindmar spend on, on the program." So I'm excited about that and kind of curious as to where we go as you go through. I know it's still early. A lot of the back work that most people don't know. I'm glad we got that sorted through and kind of moving forward on that. So I'm kind of curious as to where we're going next. And as you kind of go into the next semester, I'm sure you guys will be putting that together, so. Excited for that.
Absolutely. We, we're constantly evaluating where we're at. We're evaluating where we're at relative to the main building. We're evaluating where we're at as a program with our enrollment, which strands are really attractive to students, which ones we need to either promote or, or you know, work out in a different way. But no, we've had, this is one of 10 strands and very proud of our teachers, very proud of our students. And I just, I just see a lot of growth. I see a lot of just evolution. When you look at this, this is halfway, okay? And our projects have started this big and then they've gone to this big and they've gone to this big. Now in the second quarter, they're going to get larger and larger still. There's going to be more and more community involvement. So we'll see some of that start to ramp up here in the second quarter. And then we'll do it again in the, you know, to start over in the second semester. But really looking forward to some great growth in the program.
So are all 10 strands going this semester or is that for the year?
We have six strands going this semester. We have six going next semester. Two of them are repeat strands.
Okay. And then what's your minimum enrollment for a strand to move forward? Do you have a limit?
Minimum enrollment, right now we don't have one. We will have to look at that. Right now, we're just kind of seeing which strands are very attractive to students.
And then we also like connect as all of our strands. Like on Mondays, we go, like we're in the other building, but we go, come in here to the LRC and we all communitatively, I think is the word. Yeah, that you can, we get together and we all like have like one thing that like will help us in our life that we'll just, that one day we just use the project to think about. Like one of ours was drawing and we had to use one word. We had to figure out a drawing for it and it was through all three strands. So there was people that aren't as creative as others, which is why they took the other strand. And they also had like their creative side and it was nice to see like what other aspects we have of all three sides of each strand.
Thank you. You guys are awesome. We appreciate you coming. It's a tough thing being in front of adults, but we really are glad you came.
The Venture program was okay.
Yeah, it's all good.
I heard a lot of hesitancy, but it's true that last year. Something you guys, we didn't die, right? Nothing's broke? Nobody's hurt?
Not that I know of. You still got them in the corner.
I, I believe in you.
That's all good. Yes, you'll do fine. Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it. Alright, we need to move on to Finance Audit. Midi Met and JT, I don't know if you'd want to highlight things for us or Barry, whoever. I'm not sure who all was there, so.
Why do I have to be the one? Basically, the majority of our conversations are.
The capital projects set forth for spring and summer of 2022. Looking at doing the Excelsior parking lot along with an access road to Winslow Road, stadium turf replacement. And then we've got some roof projects related to storm damage, not derecho, but the hailstorm that actually happened in April 2020. And then some smaller projects to Indian Creek, Wilkins and the high school. We talked about just preliminary bids, the timeline for those projects. Talked a little bit about the issues with the supply chain going on right now in the, in the market and just how that might in fact, might impact the schedule as well as the cost of those projects. So, but you'll be seeing in the next several months, just action items related to these projects. So we just wanted to be, have the board to be aware of that. We also talked briefly about some policies. We know that the 800 policy series is going to be reviewed by the policy committee. So there's a few policies that we want to run by the Finance Audit team first to, to, before it goes to the actual policy committee. So we'll, we'll do that at our next meeting as well. I don't know if Brett or Barry have anything else.
I'll just add that one of the things that we did talk about and that we will be working on or looking at is the summer projects that because of the supply issues and the increase in costs, we talked about which projects might be able to wait or alternative solutions so that we're not just continuing to pay because that's what the supply and demand is right now. So we will be looking at that and taking into consideration, can something wait? And then JT also mentioned that, you know, some of those hail damage that is being covered by insurance, but the original claim, because again, supply and demand, we're going to be looking at. He's talking to the insurance, reopening those claims, see if we can get those adjusted. So more of it is still covered by insurance. So that's something the committee is going to be watching as well. So just wanted to add that.
Sounds good. Anything else?
Well, I, I did learn that the Facilities Advisory Committee keeps throwing little bits out there, but they won't share everything with us, so we just have to wait like everybody else does.
Give them a tease, brother.
That's coming too.
Which is fine.
It's coming too.
November 10th, their meeting.
Good, good.
Absolutely. Okay, anything else? If not, we'll move on to Marion City Council. I'm not sure who was supposed to report on that. Does anybody know? We're not sure. We're moving on. Okay, Marion Chamber Commerce Annual Meeting. I happened to go. It was wonderful to be in the room with people again, finding out about all that happened while it was, nobody was supposed to be together. You know, there's still lots of things happening, so that was pretty awesome. Marion is moving forward. It's a great community to be a part of and certainly saw, you know, lots of the things that were happening there. We had a great speaker. Shannon, did you want to add anymore? Anybody else? I think it was just the two of us that were.
Brett was there as well.
Was there too. I'm sorry, Brett. Yes, you did.
I'll just say that, yeah, the speaker was great. It was a good reminder to focus on the positives and moving forward and things. So I thought that was a nice, nice thing. We got a little shout-out when Medco gave their update on the Community Build projects and the success of the first house and they're working on their second. So that was nice to kind of see that partnership being given recognition at a top citywide level. And yeah, I'm really just excited to, to see all of the developments that are happening and they're making a lot of progress uptown. And so that was, it was just nice to hear all the updates and to also get that little shout-out from the district, so.
Weren't they saying that around Thanksgiving, was it Seventh Avenue supposed to open? Am I right on that?
They said if the weather holds, you should be able to drive down Seventh Avenue at the beginning of December, so.
And then it rained about six feet yesterday.
Yeah, I know. I was going to say, and then it rained and rained and rained. So anyway, it sounds exciting. It sounds exciting. Alright, so we'll go on to unfinished business, new, new business, the agenda for consent.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments? Discussion?
You're still doing Boma Woods Roof.
I know, I saw that. Is it the blue part? Just tell me it's that. Is it really? Yes. We might have it all one color yet, right? No, they're taking that away.
We talked, we talked about that it might be better for it to be blue and then have like a Sondra Nelson plaque on it.
I've worked very hard to get rid of this blue in his back. No, anyway. Anyway, that's awesome. Alright. Anything else on here? We have any questions? Not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye.
What?
Aye? Opposed? Okay. So on to, let's see here, Board Communication. I just want to say for board members, be thinking about what committee you would like to be on next year. You know, we're assigned ones, if I can get to where they are, it's on the back page. And there will be the Finance Audit, Policy Governance, Career Technical Education or CTE, School Improvement Advisory Committee. Those would be the four. And Facilities Advisory Committee, the three of us that have been on this will continue until that's taken care of. We won't be changing. And then once that has been presented, then we'll go from there. So just be thinking about what, what committees you would like to serve on. That would be my, my ask for the future.
A couple of things. First of all, I want to say Human Resource rocks. You know, it's a difficult situation when, when you're trying to be as flexible as you can with the number of buckets that you can take money out of. And being able to do that because the substitutes and the aides and everything, they're absolutely essential for our, for our students in our district. And to be able to brainstorm and work together to try and create something that will attract other people to get involved, that I think is really important. And my next thing is, I'd like to commend Shelley Wood. I've worked with her several times on, on different graduations and, and giving tours and stuff like that. And I know that one of them was talking about the class of '76 and I was invited to that. And she just strolled up there and put out a big bucket for, for donations and they were putting in donations like crazy. And it's, it's just one of those things that what, she's kind of an unsung hero for what, what, what she does for, for the district. what, she's kind of an unsung hero for what, what, what she does for, for the district. And, you know, it's gonna be a kind of a, a challenge for who steps in to, to fill her shoes. And she's just gonna be greatly missed. And she's so much fun to work with. That's all.
I just wanted to make comment. Rachel Wall is not here tonight because she had surgery. So that's why she is not here. Are there any other comments or questions that you'd like to make?
Just one, just one quick comment. I felt that the, the athletic directors last month, last meeting did a tremendous job. Because we don't realize what's all going on in the district. We don't realize what they're trying to accomplish. And their hands are tied as well when it comes to facilities and everything else. And it, you know, you didn't hear any frustration, but all you heard was, is they're doing their best, doing everything they can. And I think they made a comment that our fall is going quite well. You know, it's great to have the kids back as active as we possibly can. You know, and a quick comment, I need to do this for my granddaughter. The girls cross-country to a teen qualified for state. So that's gonna be on Wednesday. Anna's a freshman, so I need to put that on the docket. So.
Of course.
So it's just, it's just a compliment to the kids. Not a different than these venture kids. They got into something they really wanted to do and, and just to really stride out. So, you know, I just thought that was a great presentation last week. So.
It's great to have updates. That's for sure. Find out what's going on. Anyone with anything else to say? Any comments? If not, I entertain a motion for you to move. Okay, Sarah, second? Okay, Brett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at.